Good evening and welcome. I am Mrs. Ref Fiore, Principal of Wyndham Middle School. Thank you for joining us this evening for the State and Schools Address. This evening we will hear about the many successes that Wyndham Public Schools has achieved through the vision and leadership of our Superintendent Dr. Patricia Garcia. Dr. Garcia is a forward-thinking, dedicated leader whose mission is to embed culturally-responsive teaching into the rigorous curriculum taught at the Wyndham Public Schools. Additionally, she is an outstanding advocate for social justice and tries to make sure that a Wyndham education is one that allows for every classroom, every student, every day to be college and career-ready. We are lucky to have her with us as our Superintendent. On that note, I am pleased to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia Garcia.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Fiore. And I want to say that we have an outstanding Principal here at the middle school with Mrs. Fiore. Actually, Mrs. Fiore is one of the first person I hired five years ago when I came to Wyndham Public School. Good evening and thank you for being here this evening with us. We know that these are busy times, but we really appreciate you being here with us this afternoon, this evening. Your participation here with us this evening really demonstrate your commitment to Wyndham Public School. It's really an honor and a privilege to serve the Wyndham Public School, to serve the Wyndham community. I'm starting my fifth year as Superintendent of the Wyndham Public School, and every day I'm inspired by the students, by the teachers, by the administrators, and by the parents to continue in this journey. It's really a pleasure to see our parents here tonight, and to see members of our community, and to see members of our school board. I would like to acknowledge Mrs. Lampert, that is a member of the Board of Education. Mrs. Lampert, thank you for coming here this afternoon. Educating a child is a process that begins at home and continues throughout the school. So many people are needed along the way: teachers, administrators, support staff, community members, and volunteers. And to all that support our students, I say, "Thank you for supporting our schools." And we reflect on our collective progress and the challenges, yes, the challenges of Wyndham Public School. We're proud of our students. We're proud of the work of the teachers and administrators. We're proud of our parents. Therefore, this afternoon, I would like to share with you our accomplishment at the school district, also our challenges at the school district, and the work that we're currently doing to achieve the goals of the Wyndham Public School. Our success and how well we achieve our mission, vision, theory of action, and strategic goal depends on how we implement these four principles. These four elements constitute our standard of performance, and they are intended to strengthen our school. Our mission or our purpose is to provide equal education and high qualification to our students. Our vision is that all students graduate college and career-ready. We achieve our mission and our vision through our theory of action, our model of change, and the strategic one, the roadmap that guides the school district to excellence. Before we start talking about our goals at the district, let's have a little bit of information of who are, who's Wyndham Public School. Wyndham Public School is an urban school district with the highest percentage as second language learner in the state of Connecticut, 28%. We're also one of the districts with the highest percentage as special education students, about 20%. And one of the highest percentage as free and reduced lunch, about 85%. Currently, we are universal breakfast in Wyndham Public School. Poverty, mobility, second language, and our reality here at Wyndham Public School. However, I believe as Superintendent that we're in a perfect position to eliminate the impact that these demographic holds on our students. I believe the district have a promising future for our students. We consider diversity an asset. Our challenge is how we put system in place and structure in place to support our students, to make sure that they can achieve, to provide reverse learning, and to develop social and emotional learning in each one of our classrooms. How do we achieve this? We achieve this with the five goals of the school district. Before we go to the goals, let's go back to the slide before. Since we're here at the middle school, I would like to point out that five years ago when I started, the middle school was around close to 500 students. Just to point out to you that enrollment in the district is increasing. One of our fastest-growing schools in enrollment is the middle school. Currently, we have 655 students in the middle school. Years ago, we were about 500 students. What we're seeing is that students are now leaving us now after fifth grade. They're coming to our middle school, and I would like to thank Mrs. Fiore and her team for their hard work. This is really a good point to point out. So how do we achieve all that we want to achieve in the district? The district have five strategic goals: improve student achievement and growth, supporting staff growth and success, partnering with our partners, optimizing operation for efficiencies, and strengthening climate and culture. Let's discuss improving student achievement and more. Our top priority in this school district is to improve student achievement. We want students to learn, we want students to grow, and we want students to contribute to their society. Today's students are much different than before. Let's talk about the impact that technology has on our students. Today's students mostly leave our high school, prepare for the world of college, and prepare for the world of career. And beyond that, they should be ready and must be ready to be participants in the global society. Therefore, I will put system in place, learning system in place, to improve leadership and learning. We also focus it on the world beyond the classroom. Last year, I shared with you in this same auditorium the tremendous work that we have done to put learning system in place, curriculum in place, and assessment in place. Today, I will share with you the outcome of those system. We have developed and implemented a one-way dual-language program at Sweeney, Natural, and Wyndham Center. The research about the benefit of bilingualism is strong and sound. In addition to understanding another culture, in addition to being a tool for communication, and in addition to employment opportunities, the latest research about bilingualism talks about the cognitive benefits of bilingualism, the cognitive process of bilingualism. Wyndham Public School has enjoyed a dual-language program, Compañeros, for many, many years at their Wyndham Elementary School. Now, three more schools in the district, Natural Elementary School, Wyndham Center, and Sweeney, will have the opportunity to offer the students the tool of learning another language with the objective of being bilingual in both, bilingual, bilingual, and bicultural in both, both languages, English and Spanish. We continue to expand our early college opportunity for our high school students by offering courses in Principles of Microeconomics, yes, we offer Principles of Microeconomics, Powernet Design, and Biotechnology. Our ECO program in partnership with Electric Boat, and EMA, and QBCC has been recognized nationally as a program of distinction for college and career readiness. Let us take a moment to hear from the students in the ECO program. This is a lab for students to learn the skills in how to design and manufacture. Here we have several students, and we have instructor Dr. Ait. Dr. Ait, could you tell us why our students are learning about this project?
This is very interesting, it was just from my sharing. You know, it shows students how to use basic tools, and how to use those tools to manufacture.
My dear classmate, a couple of your students, what are you learning in this class and why do you like this class?
I like this class because I'm planning to actually do this in my career in the future, and that's how far I just want to add to this. So my second choice for my career is to continue in it.
As you can see, this is a lab that is in the high school. It's a lab that was dominated by Electric Boat. This is the first classroom in the lab. There's another classroom beyond this lab where the students experience designing front concept, architect designing, and putting their design in implementation, creating whatever concept they want to create at that time. Nevertheless, the district continued to focus on instructions by revising the district curriculum and assessment system. Two years ago, I spoke to you about the need assessment that was conducted, and the tremendous work that had been done to create curriculum maps, coping sequences, to help teachers and students with instruction in the classroom. As a result of those efforts, the district last year developed a standard report card for K through 2 elementary school. And at this time, we also are, that will be implemented this year, K through 2. And we also are developing at this time, a standard report card for grades 3 to 5. Why is this important? Why is standard report card is important? A standard report card is much different than the traditional report card that we knew and experienced. A standard report card give more meaning to learning, give more purpose to learning. Instead of a later grade, the standard report cards list the most important skills students learn in each subject in a particular grade. Not only does the standard report card help the teacher with instruction, but parents can see exactly what skills and knowledge your students have mastered or has acquired. As we continue to monitor our progress, we continue to enhance the opportunity for students to receive support in ELA and mathematics through the development of a multi-tier support for our students called the WINDBLAG. We're opening and offering access to all students. So what is the WINDBLAG and how does it work? Each school and at each grade has what we call a WINDBLAG. That is a particular, on a daily basis, that is a particular time of the day assigned to provide additional support to students in ELA and in MACT. Students that are accelerated also use this time to be accelerated. In the next video clip, you will see a natural fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Nicole May, is working with a group of students in the WINDBLAG, fourth-grade students, to help them solve word problems. Let's take a look at the WINDBLAG in action at Natural Elementary School.
Parker, you're going to write down writing notice about this word problem. Remember when we write a notice, we're noticing things that are related to math. If you're dumb if you're noticing, you can draw a line for a second spot and then write down what you want to. And then share votes. Okay, do one of us to share. One of us to share. Go ahead. I have this comparison. There's no question. But... They spent money on more data. So I think you're going to go on modeling and solve some problems. So go on to read the first part. How their motion was ever been modeled.
In this particular example, these six students or five students are having difficulty solving word problems. In each school, at a particular time, students meet together with a particular teacher to focus on that particular skill that they need to enhance or need additional support. It's really something that we're very proud to offering students that additional support, and students that are ready enough to let them move on to a different acceleration. Strengthening the teaching of mathematics is another major focus of our school district. We started algebra in eighth grade, and every year we're very proud of the increase in the number of students that are taking algebra here at the middle school. Move on to high school, already achieving the algebra credit. And as you know, algebra is the gateway to college, and we're committed to our fellow students that opportunity to take algebra here at the middle school. These are also, they are also other initiatives that contribute to the development of the whole child. Through our partnership with State and Music Foundation and the Austin Foundation, the district has developed phase one of a robust music program in the elementary school. This year, Sweeney and Natural are receiving a grant that will allow students at these schools to start with a general music program and move to instrument, to instrumental music. This grant will provide musical instrument to all the students in the school for a period of eight years. This year, we're starting with two schools, we're planning to add the other elementary school next year. In a video clip that you will see, and this is a few seconds, you will see a group of Sweeney students excited about the instruments that we are playing. One, two, go! This is day two, I feel like open the boxes with a silent phone. They also have drums, guitars, and piano. And they're very, very, very excited about really using their instrument. And I understand also, lack of talent for our students. As you can see, our progress at the district, it reflected in many, in many ways, and we measure our progress, our progress in many ways also. As a result of the hard work of teachers, staff, parents, administrators, and implementation of learning system, the district continued to move forward. High school graduation has increased by 24% since 2011. K-A students, meaning ESPA benchmark assessment, in ELA has increased 6.5 in the last three years, and 10.6 in mathematics in the last three years. At month placement of the high school and early college experience courses have increased by 67% of the high school. We're closing the achievement gap in the state of Connecticut with our high needs students by 4% in ELA and 3% in MACT. Students taking algebra here at the middle school have increased by 64% since 2016. How do we get this work done? We have to work with our staff, and we have to support our staff. Another strategic goal of the district at Wyndham Public School is support staff growth and success. Every employee plays a role in student success. Every employee in the school district play a role in the educational journey of our students. Investing in our human capital is essential to the district ability to effectively deliver its mission, its vision, and therefore improve student learning. Three principles support growth and our staff: Build their capacity to be more effective in the classroom, establish a culture of collaboration for staff to decrease and be innovative, and hold everyone accountable for student growth and achievement. With this in mind, the district offer many ways for instructional staff to grow and to develop. Today, I will mention four initiatives that the district is using. Number one, the Equity Fellows. Number two, the Teacher Leadership Academy with the NEA School of Education. The third one, the teacher initiative and focus on targeted professional development. The first initiative I'd like to share with you is the Equity Fellows Academy. With a grant from the NALIVA Foundation, ten teachers, eight from Wyndham High School, and two teachers from Wyndham Middle School receive monthly training on the topic and concept of equity. They learn more about the issue and biases in the classroom, and how teachers, what teachers can do to achieve better outcome for our students based on educational equity. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, we are an urban school district with many, many challenges. And one of the aspects of strengthening our school culture is to make sure that everyone understand that it's not only about access and opportunity, it's also about outcome, educational outcome for all our students. And that equity is not a program, equity is a process. Another important initiative to build teacher growth and success is the Teacher Leadership Academy with the NEA School of Education. The teachers who participate in this program are becoming expert in the field of instruction by serving at demonstration classroom and providing feedback for the teacher. Let's hear from Mrs. Kat Coolis, a fifth-grade teacher at Wyndham Center, about the impact that this academy has had on her teaching.
Hi, I'm Kat Coolis, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Wyndham Center School here in Wyndham Public School. I've been part of the UConn Teacher Leadership Fellow Program for the past three years, and I've improved my personal craft as a teacher, and I really benefited from the entire program and from learning from the different UConn professors. We spent the past three years learning about different teacher strategies and how to take those strategies and help other teachers improve their own craft. I've had the chance to present to my own staff about these different practices that we have learned about through the UConn Leadership Program. And the hope of the program is that the knowledge that the teachers in the program learn can be passed on to others across the district. This year, we're focusing on our own personal leadership project, and these projects will hopefully take that knowledge and expand it across the district so that it can help more students and more teachers. My personal project involves creating student leaders, so taking my leadership skills and helping to pass it on to fifth-grade students.
Teacher leadership, teachers supporting other teachers. Currently, we have ten teachers that are part of this academy with the NEA School of Education at University of Connecticut. New to the district this year is our Pipeline to Teaching Initiative in partnership with the Relay Graduate School of Education. This is a non-traditional route to certification for support staff, social professional, or tutor who already have obtained a bachelor's degree. These staff members are given the opportunity to obtain their teaching license while still working for Wyndham Public School. The district has selected four employees to participate in this program over the next two years. It is basically during your own staff members, a recommendation that was provided to the district by the Minority Teacher Recruitment Committee about two years ago. And as you know, recruiting with teachers is really a difficult task for Wyndham Public School. So let's give them the opportunity to offer the staff that we currently have that want to be teachers and will have the opportunity to really obtain their license through a non-traditional route to certification. As I said before, we measure our progress in many ways. As a result of the district effort to support teachers and staff growth and success, we also can share with you the following. We have seen the result from teachers and from our survey at FALO. Thirty-four percent increased in staff responses. I have access to the resources that I need to do in my classroom since 2014. Ninety-four percent of teachers responded that the school supports them. We saw a 21% increase in the response, there's autism communication in our school since 2014. Twenty-one percent increased since 2011 regarding the response professional development I received this year providing me with a teaching strategy I need to do for my job. As we discuss student achievement, as we discuss staff capacity, it's also important to discuss our third strategic goal: partnering with our parents. Parents are our partners. Partnering with our parents and community is essential to the success of Wyndham Public School. Parent engagement across the country is growing more racially diverse, and so is Wyndham Public School. Changing demographic require educators to engage culturally and linguistically with the community. Teachers, principals, administrators, and the superintendent, we all know that parents' interest and involvement in their child learning can have a beneficial effort, can have a beneficial effect, and the child succeed in school. With this in mind, we have created many advisory groups to include community advisory group, the parent advisory group, the teacher advisory group in our school district. Our school also, I'm very proud to say, have a functional school director council. This is important, this is very important, because it gives parents the opportunity to have a voice in the school improvement process. I continue to have a monthly coffee with the superintendent once a month in the different schools in the community. And this is very important because this is my opportunity to get feedback from parents, to hear from parents, to hear their concern, to hear their suggestion, but also to hear about their aspiration for their children. And we continue to have our community forums. We have two forums so far this school year. However, recently, we added a new initiative and a new way to receive feedback from our parents through what we, a new program that we have called the Talk Exchange Program. Using technology, we're able to get different perspective from parents and from the community regarding important topics. Recently, we used the Talk Exchange Program to gain insight from the community regarding our K through 8 dual-language school. However, a major highlight of our community engagement initiative is the Parent and Community University. With this initiative, the district is listening, the district is responding, and the district is educating our parents and community. Parent University has expanded to have monthly workshop now in our community. Let us take a look at a recent session of Parent University. In this video clip, you will see that Mrs. Luna, a second-grade teacher at Natural Elementary School, showed parents how students are instructed to work in math with math word problems.
She's still a little cup at home, and with the news for her in the back door. And it makes it fun, making fun. If they're adding or subtracting, that's what they're going to do. So when you go to the store, if you're patient, if it's not busy and there's a big crowd behind you, have them help count the money, get it ready. Maybe just do the change or just the dollars, whatever you feel comfortable with. But it's applying the same skills, right? So that's any, right? They sit down, count the cinco, cinco. So that would be the nicos, diez, cien, diez, right? The dimes. So it's important that they know how to do it. They're actually, this is a life skill. And they're going to be more excited about it. The more real-life experience in it, the more important they're going to see that math is.
As you can see, this session is done in Spanish and English by people to meet and meet our parents. And as I said before, we believe in engagement, listening, responding, and educating our parents. And as a result of the efforts, the hard work, and support of the community, we're happy to report the following result in strengthening our partnership with our parents. Eighty-six percent of the school director council seats are filled, and this is a major improvement for the school district, giving parents a voice in the school improvement process. More than 200-plus home visits during this summer to parents in our community that was done by the home liaison and administrators. Increase of eight percent of parents responded, "I feel welcome at the school." Respond from parents, the school offered many ways to be involved in my child education, an increase of 10% since 2014. The schooling brought up support learning, an increase by 8% since 2014. Not only our parents' satisfaction increased over the years, but our parent engagement in the decision-making process for the school also has increased. This commitment shows that our parents, this commitment to our parents is demonstrated in their participation in the school director council and their participation in our survey that show that the welcome and the satisfaction that they have with our schools. Now, a school district is not only about student achievement, their own capabilities, staff, and parental engagement. A school district also is about operation. We have different system of operation. We have buses, we have transportation, we have food services, we have facilities. So operation is also a big part of running the school district. In Wyndham Public School, we're driven by data. Efficiency is not only about reducing costs, but it's also about the delivery of services. That is, we ask ourselves the question all the time. Are we fulfilling our mission? Are we achieving our vision? Two years ago, the district conducted a coherence audit that was facilitated by the Connecticut Center for School Change. Although the district had a strategic plan in place at that time, we're currently using the feedback from this audit to revise and make adjustment to our strategic plan. Nevertheless, in order to achieve coherence, we have aligned our division plan to the strategic plan. plan, we have aligned our department plan and our school improvement plan to the strategic plan. Last year, we took several steps to improve operations in major areas such as finance, human resources, technology, and special education. We increased the efficiency and effectiveness of the finance and human resources departments by restructuring both departments and implementing the MUNIS financial system. We put structure in place to enhance the collaboration and the working condition and relationship between both departments, the finance department and the human resources department. We knew, and we know, that if these two departments could work together, we will have a better service, better services to all our employees. Let us hear from the Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Jolynn Peguero, and the Assistant Director of Finance, Mrs. Parcia, about the impact that these new structures have in the services provided to our school district.
All right, so we're gonna talk about these?
Yeah, so I think, you know, looking back at what we've accomplished and where we've been, the long-term goal, as you recall, was for Wyndham Public Schools and the town of Wyndham to be under the same financial system, and I think we've accomplished that.
Additionally, we wanted to build the efficiency and streamline the process and not have people entering, we should book our departments.
Yes, and so actually, due to the complexity of our headquarters, the nine unions that we have, we ran two employee payroll systems at the same time because we wanted to ensure 100% accuracy and the data comparison. And it also led to a wholly unique situation with our own employees between our two departments because they had the opportunity to build the system from the ground up, and they were doing their own computer coding, so to speak, just like our STEM students, in a way.
So, that fits, talk about the energy harness.
Sure.
It's the reporting and the efficiency of how we can grab data out of the system is so much easier and user-friendly than our old systems today.
Absolutely, and you know, I think that there's still room to grow.
I'm happy to report that the Assistant Director of Finance and the Director of Human Resources and the Superintendent, we all are very happy that we were able to implement the MUNIS financial system. I can assure you better services to all of our employees. In the area of technology, the district moved to the implementation of Chromebooks and the Google Suite Classroom. The technology plan for the district includes a one-to-one in all schools by 2020. In January 2018, all sixth graders and ninth grader students across the district started the one-to-one Chromebook and the Google Suite Classroom using that platform. Everyone excited about the Google Classroom, about the one-to-one initiative. We're moving beyond the 21st century. Let us take a look at our middle school, this middle school here, a group of sixth grader in Spattery Word class, Language Art class, how they're using their Chromebook and the Google Suite Classroom. The teachers give a brief overview of the class and then direct the students to complete some discussion questions using the Chromebooks. This is a sample you see our students collaborating, teamwork, discussion, and problem solving qualities of the 21st century learning. In the area of special education, we increased the services, internal services to our students in special education, would build a stronger partnership with EastCon for support in the autism program that we have at Sweeney Elementary School. The district has been able to decrease the number of outplacement for the 1718 school year by 14%. As a result of looking at improving efficiency in our school district, we have achieved the following: More than 200-plus smart board installed in elementary and middle school. A 22% increase in teacher responding, I have access to technology I need at my school. An increase of 80% in the accuracy and efficiency of the monthly payroll system, and this one makes us very, very happy, I can assure you. The fifth strategic goal for the school district is culture and climate. Let me assure you that culture is intangible, but is essential. You can walk into a school and know immediately whether you want to be there or not. The same is true for students and also for parents and for staff. Preachers show that positive school exposure directly impacts student achievement, lower dropout rates, and also for teacher retention. Part of the equity work that we're doing with the Equity Fellows is also to impact the culture of school. Four major initiative guide our climate and culture goal. Focus on social and emotional learning, we are using the ruler approach, focus on restorative practices, and focus on attendance, and a focus on discipline. This year, three schools, Wyndham High School, Wyndham Middle School, and Natural are piloting both approaches, the ruler approach for social, emotional, and restorative practices. This summer, teachers and administrators from these three schools attended training at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence in New Haven, and we wanted to learn more about how to build and sustain pilot school in emotional climate in our school. Our next initiative, restorative practices, worked very well with the ruler approach. Restorative practices is a way of building relationships and creating a culture-based and community accountability, an initiative that is helping us to decrease suspension and to promote better behavior in our school. As a result of the hard work of the teachers and central office administration to improve our cultural climate, I am happy to report the following. As I said before, we measure our progress in many ways. 14% less suspension in high schools since 2017. 8.6 decrease in chronic accentism at the middle school. 6% decrease in suspension district level. 7% retention increase in teacher retention since 2016. I have shared with you some sample of the progress that is the result of the hard work of entire Wyndham community, entire Wyndham Public School. But we cannot achieve this without the support, without your support, without the support of parents and the support of the community. So the question is, what is next? Very excited about the progress that we have made in Wyndham Public School. We're excited that we are moving the district to the next level of work. Although we have much more to celebrate, there's still many challenges that lie ahead of us. I read an article a couple weeks ago that talks about Google and who they hire in their company, and they said that transcripts are not important to work at Google. Instead, they look for candidates that are problems-solver and critical thinker. Last year, we invited Dr. Pedro Noguera to come and be the school district, and in his speech, he said the following: "Today we have," my quote, "today we have to learn to work with people even if we do not like them." Therefore, we will continue to strengthen our academic programs, a priority will be given to college and career readiness, but we also strengthen the social and emotional learning of our students. Arts, music is very important to us, and definitely dual languages, so we'll continue with our bilingual program. It is critical that we conduct a feasibility study to determine the design of a K through A dual-language program in our school district, dual-language school, the dream of the Wyndham community. The high school renovation will be an opportunity and also a challenge. Construction will be taking place at the same time that students are in the building. That's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity not only to focus on the physical structure of the building, but also to focus on what will be inside of the building. This is an opportunity to complete the commission, to implement the Commission Network Plan. This is an opportunity to offer new program for students and new opportunity for college and career readiness. Very highly praised one program that works and very successful, as I said before, the Early College Opportunity Program, that I forgot to mention, that received national recognition in the month of July, national recognition as a program of distinction for college and career readiness. I am in my fifth year as superintendent of Wyndham Public School. Time is passing so quickly, but I, when you have most, but I'm encouraged and very optimistic about the future of the school district, and although we have many, many, many challenges ahead, I know that we will be able to respond to these challenges with the support of our parents and the support of the community. Well, this is a time to say thank you, this is a time to say thanks to you, to our parents, and thanks to our community. This is the time of Thanksgiving, and I want to thank all of you for being here this afternoon. I also, not only for being here, but also for believing in our students and for believing in our school district. I would like to thank the entire Wyndham community, the entire Wyndham Public School, our teachers, students, or administrators, and I would like to thank also all the parents. I want to thank the middle school, Mrs. Curran, for hosting us tonight. Thank you for hosting us. I'd like to thank Mrs. Margaret Changin, Mrs. Janet Testa, and also Mrs. Laura Handel that is back tonight, and Amara Sanchez, they're the brainers, putting this all together. I would like to thank the Board of Education, Mrs. Long River, thank you for the opportunity to be Superintendent of the Wyndham Public School, and I also like to thank the entire Wyndham community for the opportunity to serve. I want to wish all of you a happy, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, thank you for being here tonight with us.